I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is ready for Plaim's executive session. Jensen declared the meeting back into regular session at 12:17.
Tim, yeah.
You were gone.
Oh, okay.
And I wonder if you need to make note of that.
Yeah.
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 Okay.
That was... I think I understand.
Anything else? Listen, my Carlsons approved as amended in a second. Any discussion? All in favor of saying motion three is... Well, your motion continues. I guess we've got a little time here on your public comment. We've had a phone call Sunday night from a resident down on County Route 15 that a person had hit a bridge and caused damage, but he was pulling out... I call it a postponder, but he has another name for it. And something got disabled. Anyway, pulled into the farmer's yard, unhooked the apparatus, drool box. And so there's damage to the bridge on County Route 15. I notified Pat Sunday night, we'll hear more about it when Pat comes in. And then I notified Sheriff Apple yesterday.
We don't even know who that was?
They do know who he is, yeah. Yeah. So we've got some more work to do on that, determine how much damage there is incurred. So on and so forth. Him that involved in some of the conversations as well.
Did you see the bridge or...? Did you see the bridge?
They took pictures of all I have. I'm excited with just the tires real, but I don't know. Good morning, Dylan.
Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you for coming in.
I have Dawn scheduled or give the public notice or whatever for the potential medical marijuana ordinances. I'm working off a couple drafts that I had gotten at the state attorney's conference. I'm a deputy from the county county's attorney's attorney. I'm just working on tailoring them to our county and changing a couple of things around as far as pricing things because it would be a lot more expensive out there than it is here. Things are just naturally more expensive out that way. So I'm just tweaking a couple of numbers and I'll have them ready to bring them to you guys on June 8th, I believe is when we have a schedule for the first reading. I'll bring those in then.
If we want to make some edits to that, though, maybe we should have earlier than the day of the first meeting.
That's a good point. I'll be... I'll finish my tweets and have them by... I'll have copies to you guys by next week, so you can get them to read before we have...
Pretty lengthy, or?
Yeah, one of them is.
If you could get them to me, Dylan, too, I can email them out to this company.
Yeah, one of them is the, like, it's a temporary stopgap type of measure because even though the law takes effect July 1, the Department of Health has until the end of October to promulgate the legislative rules for it. So what a lot of counties are doing and what I advise you guys to do is to pass the stopgap one to deny any applications between July 1 and late October until the rules are out, so we know exactly what we're dealing with. And then the other one is a lengthier one to then lays out the process requirements that the potential establishment would have to follow to get a license from a county to open an establishment.
Is the city gonna be able to do their own thing too, right?
All municipalities can do their own thing. What the county has control over is land in the county outside of any municipality orders.
The city of Sistatens notice was also in the earlier...
Okay.
Right at the mark.
And I know... And I know Dylan's working on stuff with Russell.
I know it's early, but does it look like this is like a good generated fair amount of revenue for counties and cities, or is it just that you buy a license, you buy a liquor license, it's a couple hundred bucks and that's it?
Well, the amount that I'm working on is going to board a couple hundred bucks.
Okay, alright.
Which is based on what other counties are doing.
But that's just you have an annual fee?
Yeah.
So you can...
And then there's the taxes that the state collects from it, I'm assuming will come back in a percentage as well.
When you mentioned earlier more expensive West River, are you referring to licensing fees?
Yes, because in my... Speaking of the county's attorney's attorney, they just had a liquor license set up for 50 grand a couple years ago. So that's what she was basing the pricing on there for the marijuana establishment on. Obviously, we don't have liquor licenses going for that amount, so that would... And the way the law is written is a reasonable fee. So her charging somewhere around that there is reasonable considering what their liquor license has gone for.
Yeah.
That wouldn't be a reasonable number either.
Yeah. Do you have a little idea when the Supreme Court's gonna hand out a decision on that?
My best guess is one of two options. Either they put out a opinion within the next month to get it out prior to the July 1 effective date, or they're gonna sit on it for a year. And you have the last chance, do it if they're gonna do it before the issue of...
Sure, it'll be on hold already, you can't.
Right, the recreation was on hold pending the Supreme Court opinion. And then the other thing I have for you guys this morning, we should go to the second floor.
Yeah. I want to go to the session by the simple to a second to that. My Carlson, all in favor of simplifying this?
Alright.
I want to say no, motion carries.
Sorry, guy.
Sorry about that.
You need things on the floor.
Yeah, I was gonna say, alright, I'm staying here today.
I have a question on our commitments. I thought if it's a flat fee of $150 or $200 on this.
On that, or the most of them?
Yeah. He started additional hours per hour. I got, is it not listed? I mean, this isn't really clear.
Okay, I can, I can move down.
No, I mean, you're going $150 to 600.
Well, that's all, that's an hour. I worked that too.
Yeah, yeah, two hours on this and this. I mean, yeah, but what I'm saying is normally for a commitment, it's a flat fee.
Oh, my, see.
Occupied.
You turn it back off.
You want me to second that?
Sure. To keep the people's business.
I'll give that to Don.
We will.
It's important.
Can I give you that one, please?
Motion to make an attempt to approve the non-beverage applications just circulated and a second in my calls. Is there any discussion on that? All in favor of such as saying no.
Aye.
Opposed, say no, motion carries.
So, did you look at the summit, this thing?
I didn't know.
How? Several months or something?
We're talking about, they didn't lie to them like this.
Oh, summit?
Yeah, what happened there?
There was a, between, James would get the summit bills, email them, and then he'd take, and then he has to verify it, okay, work accounts and everything like that. And then he would give it to Tyler. Well, I think Tyler just thought, oh, that's from my file. So then, every once in a while, James would, you know, he'd email me and say, I don't know what's going on. This one came back that we're overdue. So, yesterday, well, last week, we just took copies of all the summit bills. And yesterday, I spent going through day by day, you know, because we get charged like two weeks at a time. And so then I contacted James and I, I was missing almost all of April. Ian, Tyler haven't worked out. They, now they, they're on the same page.
So, this 22,000 is for just April or, I mean, over there?
All of April and, and two in, all of April and all, and two in May.
Wow. Okay. Do we have an idea where Mark is coming in?
He's got contract two time for, for a delinquent and then...
I'm not staying here by myself.
Wait, go yet?
No, done. Want one for sale? Probably should, but a little bit of writing.
This is Nielsen.
It's just gonna be a part.
Okay.
That stuff is pretty expensive, too. Yeah, 'cause this was all fairly good stuff here, yeah. So, that's what you got going on for Memorial Weekend. I know what you do for Memorial Weekend, getting ready for, for Saturday, yeah? Maybe a family home coming home, too, be kinda different than, you know, you wouldn't always see it at the farm. How he just not to move that air conditioning need to be replaced, but hasn't been replaced, so I don't, it's gonna be a cool weekend, so maybe not be a big deal. It's gonna be different. I don't know if the kids are gonna stay there or not. I don't think she's doing so much. I wonder if she was. Yeah, finding very much that, 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 yeah, that's it. You need to convince her. What she did yesterday, I mean, I said, oh, why she up front, she wasn't so embarrassed, so you gotta get out there. And she just, here's the mess, like, people around, everybody here is a mess, you know? Don't worry about it, but I, I think she went down. And she was in quarantine for two weeks, and the last two weeks they've been locked off. So, you can bring her, your love was outside, and she couldn't go in, so that's what we got to get out yesterday. And I think, you know, she wants to come to the farm, but...
For you, Jim.
You don't wanna do that too quickly, so she thinks that maybe she's gonna come back to the farm and look, or something, I don't know. It's, uh... Martin.
I've never seen any other bills have come in. Aaron has that.
I don't have, you know, how, hey, they, they go into labor.
Maybe they use a way to make a policy or something, I don't know.
I knew that.
I don't know, maybe. You hear the record, once we go see who works there, it's like...
This week? If I got...
I'll be in hot here in this sack.
Oh, man!
Okay, let's not say this.
Not, not the good news, you guys.
Let's say not a second, this is... Hey, Martin, I was just talking about the, the structure that got hit over on Sunday. It was... Oh. We were talking about that, and it was township bridge. No, that's the county bridge on the county road. So, I talked to Aaron this morning, and, and I got pictures from the sheriff's department there for you guys to look at. Um, he's gonna, uh, the deputy went up there, asked her to get a, a report done, but he doesn't have it done. And then I'm gonna get back to the sheriff on, you know, an estimated cost of the damages. And then he can put that in there for restitution. This gentleman that was driving down the roots, I mean, ran into the railing and busted it all up and it went off. And broke an axle on his road. Uh, he was following a stump ponder, or a post ponder behind his pickup, and he lost control. And then he took it off and he went anyway, it's, and he said, I'll put the, the guy on, I don't know. I think it was a little more than a month.
So, Aaron says he knows who the guy is.
Yeah.
Yeah, I called Tyler yesterday to reword it.
Okay.
So, uh, hopefully they can...
Yeah, they got, he told me the guy's name.
He's from Dolan.
Yeah. Not his maiden address, and this man, hopefully he's gonna have it in his hands. Said they're gonna follow up on it up, and then he was gonna get back to me, and I said, I'll try to get an estimate to him this morning. Get, get them all rolling, and hopefully, otherwise, we don't get charged with it.
Did the guy try to disappear? I mean, did he, I mean, you said he parked the thing and left, that he was never coming back?
He got up, he got up to the fireplace a lot of nights, because they hired, and he took the office.
Did he talk to him?
I tried to talk to Aaron, and they were trying to talk and talk, you know, trying to figure out what was he doing, you know, who he was. And then, he, he left to go home, I don't know how it made it home.
Does, don't, don't actually ask Tyler when it comes to, if it's really important to get the guy's insurance information?
Yeah, so I'm sure that we're...
Company agent, if you can, and the policy number.
Yeah, it's either, I've always worked on that now when I talk, and I, so hopefully, when Darren was doing the report, the deputy, yeah, better finish your report yet, so... But I did, uh, nothing to do with it, so... But, yeah, we can pursue it after that. Um, try and get time, so we can try to get some more up, so... Um, I know that, uh, we did talk about last week about the bridge, we're still on, hopefully, on, uh, the bridge on the eastern road. The project's going real well, and hopefully, um, before the end of the week, hopefully, we'll be able to get the railing up. If it doesn't rain, you know, behind, because the arch paving, the, the entrance, the, the approaches on both ends, so... Um, we're, but they already contacted the railing company to come on Wednesday, tomorrow, so they should be done today with the paving on both ends. So, we get the railing finished this week, so, yeah. We're gonna, of course, repatchy after a little while, we get going on that road, so, but, anyway, that's kind of our path, so...
What do you have now, Pat?
Um, right now, we're on 23, I'm not, and we got going 19, so we're doing a bunch of potholes at large right now.
You can ask anyone, I think they're...
Yeah, come on, eight, me?
Just come off of...
Ten? Well, yeah, see, when they run from the hills, they run up north. And I wish Bobcat had roomed about, but smart, he would've went and got that this time, and then around 23, we're gonna get that this week, uh, next, you know, like, tomorrow, hey? I wanna have him finish up 23 and up there, and then we're gonna come down, okay? If we want that roomed out real good and everything, and tapped it, and then have nothing, I'm, I'm gonna get that soon.
Have you been up that back from the, yet, from the show or something else?
Yep, all last week, um, we did all last week, the worst stuff, but back in Zoom, 34, and then we went up 5, or, I estimate, 1 west. And, yeah, you know, by next Tuesday, after the long week, I mean, hopefully, we can go up there. Talked about these, so, well, we'll be doing it next, next week, and some of the, the worst stuff, so... Kind of the plan, getting going, so, and we're just getting the worst stuff now in the pile.
Sure.
And we can start normal, heavy with the... So, um, pretty much all of that for today, I guess.
What about the morder?
The morder for the new truck is gonna be about two, three weeks to get it in for our truck. But I got a call there yesterday, morning or whatever it was, and they actually couldn't give us between 12 and 14,000 dollars credit on that engine, so, for freight line. Cause it only had, you know, one mile, and, uh, so they're gonna give us, besides this core credit, they're gonna give us more credit, because, hey, this shouldn't happen, you know, you're getting credit. So, it's really good news, so... So, we get a break on that anyway.
Order for 42 and anything?
Yeah, well, it's 42 and then just come on. And, uh, the guy that's, you know, the main guy that had the number, I just, wow, I'm surprised. So, that's good news.
Well, that's usually thinking the other way.
It's a huge...
You gotta do backup order.
Yeah, usually it's the other way. Yeah, we're gonna need that anyway, don't worry about that.
Well, it's not a freight line.
Oh, God. Yeah, no, it's, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You work? Yeah, yeah, I say, thanks. That's good news, right?
See you, Ben.
See ya.
I have the check.
Okay.
If you want to sign it, I can also...
You wanna include that in motion?
Sure, I do.
Okay, thank you.
Come on, right here. We had a request for a contract for reimbursing, um, prior year taxes. We're bringing that forward to you, that is some, for your information, if you want to look at that. Um, on that one, we had a contract in the past. She's working with Roseup Dakota right now, so, like you said, we'd be able to... Yes. I just wanted to like, have that one, I'd heard signed yesterday, just to, just to have it a little more in detail and what's happening and... Actually, she will follow it through this time, because we worked it out, so then it'll be paid off, her back taxes will be paid off in a year. At a lower amount than what she was planning to pay in the past. So, I think we will give a little better response on that, as long as we should continue with payment and stuff, so... I expressed to her that I did not want to enter one because of her past. And she said, can you give me one more try? So, I said, I, I would work with her, so... I think, I think if we try on that one, we will maybe get somewhere, but she's working on some house repairs, so that's why she's in need of it, so...
This is one of the 144 that you mentioned a few weeks ago?
Yep.
Okay.
So... Another thing, I'm, I'm the, I had a question about having an extra employee come in or something and get some additional help. Um, I've had about five calls on neighbors to those properties of 144. I've had about five people contact me about trying to buy some of those prior properties. And I think if we can get it into a consideration of where we're at with it, or if we're going out to, um... Repossess it or something along that line, and having an option to resell it to somebody else, we would get that, the back taxes back. But it's the process of getting to the point of knowing where we're at with them, um, 144 that are in that timeframe where we should be looking now. Right now, we have, uh, that was, this was in, uh, approximately 648,000 of back taxes that haven't been paid.
Was it on, you said what?
648,000. And that was as of April 30th. If I recall, so between your office, John, and Mark's, we're trying to check the dates to make sure that they're at a date, uh, to where they could be taken?
Yeah, because how, how many years is, is it before the county can take them?
They have to be three full years in, in years. So, we wouldn't be able to start taking the property until year four. And those 144 that I talked about, 114, whatever it was, they are in the four plus years.
Is it 114 or is it 140?
Uh, I'm just thinking of 140, but I wasn't, you brought 140.
30 better than one.
Yeah, I, you know.
So, in order to take these properties, if that's what we decided to do, that becomes a legal issue, so, uh, state attorney would have to grab the documents in order to...
He said they're legal.
Well, wait, there's a, there's a whole process for the prop, for taking a property, and that, that's where I'd like to have some additional help for that. Mainly because it's to stay on top of it, either, we either need additional help at the county at times, or additional help staying on top of the properties. Because it'll also work with downstairs, with Sherry's office a little bit more, because I'm seeing some properties that might have had a house on it at one point, and it's no longer there, but it's still being property, or taxed as a house, so that might be some of the issue. But, like I said, it's, it's more of a research to get us to the point of saying, okay, this property is correct where it's at. We are ready to go forward to the courts with it, saying, yes, this is a property that is behind it, yes, this is a property that needs to be taken. So, that's kind of more along of what I'm hoping this person will be, and also a backup for additional motor vehicle side. Cause there are times where it just gets to be too busy, or, or things just happen, so... Um, that's kind of what I was bringing up, see where we're at, um, what you had thought about, so...
Which are these properties, are they in a township, or are they in cities?
It'll vary, I mean, I, there's no, I don't have a way to just sort out, um... I also think some of these also have contracts and have not been followed up on, and that's part of our office's issue. Because it's, there is a contract there, but if you miss that one month, without somebody following up on those on a monthly basis, you don't go out and tell them, hey, you missed this painting, what's wrong? You know, you don't get that.
Speaking of communicating, I'm, I'm curious, what kind of, what kind of correspondence took place for this person to come forward and get this contact?
She came to me.
Okay.
And that's, that's the only reason I would give that contact, and I told her I was not interested in giving the contract, but she asked.
If your, if your office contacted her and told her that it was about to be taken, possessed by the county here, how, how it came about?
She, she, if she can't, if she's working with Roseup Dakota, and they're gonna invest money and improvements in her house, they probably get some checking and, um, you're, that, you know, back taxes and...
She, she has been working with me since December, and we, I mean, trying to get something, and I'm sure it's due to the fact that she's trying to get some repairs done on her house.
Good.
And the funds were there. Um, she had been speaking with a bank, trying to get a loan to pay off the prior year taxes.
Okay.
And more or less, out of the 1,600 that she was gonna need, they would offer her 200.
Okay.
So, she, that wasn't really an option for her. So, then she went to, or she was working with Roseup, and I'm sure that that's where the situation was for her to come in.
Well, both to be complimented, and working this, so, I think she should start. Shouldn't want to follow through.
The other thing is, this per, this individual should qualify for a freeze on assessment situation, but has never applied for it. So, we work with that also, so we're trying to get her into a spot where she's better.
Okay.
So, and I'm willing to do that, it's just that trying to get to the point where we know where we're at with these individuals is the issue.
Are you able to determine on your list, which is the oldest, and which is the more recent of those hundred and some units? Like going back to some that had an older contract, for this instance?
I haven't gone through to look at contracts to see if they've got a contract. I do have a list of about, yeah, it's less than 20 contracts, I believe, that really haven't been followed. And, and I know there are, would that be a good place to start? At, when, at the point of, if we have additional help, um, putting that person in a little bit more view of where we're at, being the starting point. Because, um, there are individuals on here... Because, um, there are individuals on here, let me just find one, goes back to 2005. And, but that one, and he, they have... They have six properties in that same situation.
That's just going to be my next question. You have 114 properties, but how many, you know?
How many owners?
Yes.
Yeah, I haven't, I haven't gone through that part, but I know the very first page for the five are one over, so...
That's, that's a lot of tax, back taxes to have in the books.
Yep. And I mean, and it was from when I started, I was told that we're not here to take properties, so I haven't done a lot of it. So that's where I'm kind of taking over. And it's, it's a, it's a, where, where do you start on it? And where, how do you get to that point of knowing where you're at?
It sounds to me like it's kind of a temporary situation where if you get this cleaned up, things are easier. You indicated to pass it on that your office is able to help with some of this stuff. Is this something that they could get involved in and help? Would be adequate amount of help or?
We could, we could help, but when we're, when we've got, you know, spare time or downtime and, you know...
You know, if we put together a process and I had a lot of different people's computers set up, it seemed to me like when I had my little business, I mean, if this guy owed me money, someone showed up at my computer, they didn't pay me, he said, oh, you gotta go contact Georgia to pay this month. So I contacted Georgia to pay. So we put up the computers, so we know if someone misses a payment, I mean, you must log those payments in if you want, so... Or quarterly, whatever they're making, so if you did make a payment, it should, it should, something in your tick will follow, just say, hey, contact this guy. So you would have to constantly go through all the paperwork to determine who owe you, or...
If somebody does owe you money and they're making payments, do you hold that in a fund, you have a certain period of time and then you credit, right?
So we can only take a full year once it's behind. So no matter how many payments they make, it's still going to be...
It's going to be a full year?
Yeah, you can't take that year until, um, that's kind of what I'm going to go through our 735 book. That's my next thing this week is to start working on those to see where we're at with some of these properties, if they have been making any payments or not. The situation with taking a property, once we get to the point where we are fully into this and saying, yes, we've, we've sent letters saying, you're behind, you're not paying, what's your, what's your next decision? Are we going to go to court with this? That process, once that starts, 180 days on each property. And then they have another 180 days to reclaim it afterwards, I believe. So it's almost a full year to get a property into your name. So as far as a temporary, there's a lot of long-term issues that need to be addressed.
What if you have to report on these if they're delaying the taxes?
In order to sell it, you supposedly are, I, this last meeting that I was at, there's a step that you go to court to get the property or to reclaim. And I believe Kay handled that process, linked to court, to get it into your name. But I know there's a step in there that every, like, like if there's a deceased owner, every sibling, child and investment has to have a, a letter sent to their individual. But the process is a little time to... Once we get to that point, you know? And I'd really like to avoid getting to that point, is what I'm trying to work for.
Well, I mean, I think that'd be a real situation, but let's say somebody's backed in 2004, these people obviously are interested in their taxes. They're backed, wow.
They're going to be amazed to it, how many people wait till the last minute to pay your taxes, right?
Yeah, till you threaten to take the property and then all of a sudden they come up with the money. Right. But if your office could help investigate some of that stuff and then if letters need to be sent out, okay, that's the kind of thing that, that Kay would be interested in looking for. So she would work at her own pace, at her own time at home if she wanted to have to make it.
Okay, nipples, yeah.
Yeah, as opposed to nothing at all like Dylan, who seems to be up to it, I don't know anyhow.
Once you get to that process, and I know Kay was very helpful and knowledgeable when we did lots of things that we did, so... I know she knows what she's doing with it.
Yeah, she probably knows all these people too.
I think we need to do something to provide this.
Yeah, it's a, it's a big task, but you just need to get a bite at a time. And if you, if you could look at 10 properties or 20 at a time, eventually you'll get, you'll get to the end.
You need to start the inventory, your contracts, where they are, you know, put it on there and then... And then the funds that you have already collected, you look where they're, you know, can you do a spreadsheet? You have a contract, okay, and you have...
But that, that's not the issue. I already have the contract issues and I already have that, it's just the timing to get to it. Because there are times where our office, all three of us are at the counter, all, all three phones are running. And you can see we're all over here. It's the additional person that is needed. Because it's, it's just not...
What's changed from now until, from, from two years ago or three years ago or four years ago? You know, we've, we're adequately staffed with three people at our office.
Truthfully, this last week is the slowest week we've had in a year and a half. And we're still running 25 to 30,000 dollar days.
But I guess the, the, is the dollar amount significant? To me, it's the amount of customers you deal with.
Right, and it's, no, it's, the dollar amount is not, but I mean, it's, you, you, our title's ridiculous. Our time consuming, people coming from out of state with their vehicles now, trying to get their vehicles registered here instead of somewhere else. So it's, it's more, we have been a lot busier this last year, year and a half, with the COVID, with the additional funds that people have gotten and title transfers and most types of things. And it's really just, we, in the last year and a half, there's not been a chance to really, I, I printed four months at a time of the back taxes, just trying to get them done so that I could see if something was wrong in the system. And it's, it's, I mean, I have not taken more than a half an hour lunch in a year and a half. I've worked Saturdays, I've tried to keep up on regular daily things. As far as vacation, I've taken a day or a half a day or something in the last year and a half. Wendy has been very similar to that. She generally will try, I try to make sure she gets her lunch on, but there have been days that we have both worked through lunches without a break. And it's getting to be a little too much.
No, I don't think anybody expects me not to take vacations.
There's not an expectation, we, we expect to do our work.
No, but I was just going to say, if you've got on the cities, you, you pull in, you like, you've got a ticket and you sit for 45 minutes to an hour to wait to get your DMV card and stuff. So when people here are able to walk right up to get it done, or they might have to wait five to 10 minutes, that's not that big a deal to them, I don't think. But I'm saying, it shouldn't prevent you guys from taking vacations, it shouldn't prevent you from taking the lunches and breaks at your title. If they have to sit and wait, maybe it encourages them to do more of this by mail, uh, more planning. What's a good time to come in and take care of my business, you know, they call you up and ask you?
But they still call and ask and that's still that other person trying to catch that. And there have been times where I'm the only one at the counter and both phones are ringing. And, and there's a line at the door, what do you do? I'm the one under the stress at that point, Wendy's the one under the stress at that point, Janet's the one under the stress at that point, with the line, with the phones, with the others, people. It's not fair to any one of them to be paid the same amount to somebody who doesn't, you take a, or takes 35 minute breaks or, or doesn't come in because they're, they're sick today. These guys have not been there.
No, I, we, we always have to be there.
So, I mean, as far as, as a line at the door, that's nothing. I mean, it's just another day, it's the added issues that come with the line or the phone or the phone or, or where you're at. I mean, it's, it's, there needs to be another person to assist.
Well, I'd like to see Christie do what, what she can, if she can, if she can take that list and give us some of the most aged ones that are on there, and start there. There's 10 or 12 or 15 or 10, or whatever the number is, just to see what the most...
So what's, what's...
I think, like you said, if we can get a list of the oldest and most recent, see if anything has contracts, you know, if they're over four years old, if no contract, no record payment. Is that what they're, right now, is that the process? I think that's somebody we can collect them, yeah.
Well, I think too, if, you know, if you're in a position where you, you threaten people and you never do anything about it, work gets out.
Well, you're going to, the number system will grow, because that's what you're going to grow in college and get paid.
Right, yeah, but I think if all of a sudden you start threatening to take some properties, then people might say, well, please. And they're going to attach in front of you.
I said that if they're over four years old, they have no contract, they're already paying them those four years, what are we waiting for? Send the letter, start the process. Those that have contract stuff left, come up, we'll see.
At that point, I think we can involve Kay, or at least her advice, you know, and Morgan has some time to do the form letter, follow up, uh, I mean, involve where you go.
Really, that doesn't address your issue with the counter, but I think it takes, you're able to file 114 properties that are considering $30,000 in taxes.
That's DC already going in for me, it's a...
Yeah.
Maybe we can handle it, let's find out.
Don, how much, how much time do you think, Christie, could we vote to it? Like today, today?
Yeah, I mean, she'll be working, starting to work on payroll now, at the end of the week.
We need to edge in tight here.
We do. But, but in that, we could try to, yeah, I mean, we'll work together if that works.
To me, we're piecemealing this. We're going to go at it and go at it. So one person does this and then you get Kay involved to do another, and we still have... I don't know if that would be the best plan. Time to delegate one person to spearhead. I don't know, that's just asking.
I mean, the biggest problem is, this is the same problem we always have, we have an ongoing budget for additional person mid-year. It's just that I think you try to work with what we've got. And like you say, if that doesn't work, then you have to reevaluate it in a few months or whatever, that's a different situation.
Yes, it's not in budget for the year, but we do have some extra funds, you know? And I, I keep looking at that thing, you know, how much of that can we collect? You know, we're probably not going to see anything, we might see a little bit right away, but you're only looking six months to a year down the line to, you know, that's...
And because if you're looking at just the big picture of that money, that doesn't mean that's all really collectible taxes because it might have been an error that wasn't corrected prior. So it might just be something that was done in error that shouldn't be there. So that's, that's the issue.
If a piece of property, it used to be a house, it's no longer a house, it shouldn't be taxed at 50 bucks, it should be taxed at 25 bucks, or something like that.
Right, so those are the, those are the issues that need to be researched.
But doesn't that, isn't that something that the assessors would catch when they do go out and do their...
That's only how often, and that's, that's the...
But also put it on the townships, you know? Do you know in your township if somebody takes down a building?
I might not, but my neighbor probably would.
Yeah, you know, and cities too, I mean, yeah. The assessor can't catch everything, but I mean, we, townships need to take a little more responsibility, and maybe cities.
The individual, I think everybody knows, if you have a piece of property in a city with no buildings on it, it's taxed at one rate, you put a building, this is a piece of crap building, you're still taxed on it. So he has some responsibility himself, and someone will say, I took that building down, you need to reassess it.
So if that's the reason they have to pay the taxes, why didn't they bring it to them?
Yeah.
That's because they put something in the category.
Right, and, and, but that's, that's part of it.
I just assume and say, you know, send a letter if they come and say, well, then if they come and say, well, that house hasn't been there for 10 years, say, well, okay, well then let's adjust it and pay it.
Yeah, pay your back taxes and we'll, we'll fix it.
We'll fix it, we'll adjust it, and you pay it, right, and we'll settle.
But can we adjust it? Or just on this other thing you want to assess?
And you go backwards, you went backwards, because at that point, then it's his fault, isn't it, the taxpayer? But you could say, we'll fix this year going forward, and pay your back taxes, and go, I don't want to take the debt.
Because we're looking at that with that other, like, property.
I think, I think, I think it's...
But that's different because they're paying their taxes all along.
Right, it's just you get some...
But how do you get to the point of knowing where you're at?
If Christie weren't saying that, take the property, they barely don't care.
You gotta get their attention, I think.
Well, I think if Christie can hope things that, maybe we'll find out a little more. How the issue is, it's something that we can piecemeal or something we need to, you know, for. I'd like to see how many of our past four years have no contract and no record payment. I don't know what else to do, how much further we need to go. Send a letter, start, start the process.
So if you're saying Christie, then does that mean that I can also help get her help on motor vehicle?
Does she know how to do motor vehicle?
Well, she can learn.
Right, I just, I just questioning.
Yeah, because Christie helped before. Christie and I both helped over there when, you know, I, I just do the tax side. I can certainly run the ultra program, I've been doing it for 25 years. But as far as motor vehicle, I mean, she's willing to help out with the motor vehicle.
That's, that's fine, I just...
Do you want these husband, they're sick, you know?
Oh, yeah, I mean, you know, I balance, I help balance and that type of thing. Because to get, sometimes to get somebody new, you end up training them, it takes you longer than...
Right, it's wrong.
Okay, so we're doing this on a trial? What timeframe?
Three months.
We're gonna have to have some feedback on...
Every week would be good to have.
She has to get her job done first and foremost, and then, you know...
Yeah, I mean, if that's, if that's agreeable with everyone.
All right, to me, I'm here two weeks, and let's see where we're at. If it's not working, we move on.
Two weeks?
Two weeks, it's my, my thing.
And what, two weeks mean?
I want to see some progress.
Maybe if that thing, Crystal, like, said, well, this is way bigger.
Right.
Or maybe, so I, we'll...
Chip away, I mean, it's not going to be done in, in, in a couple of months, time, it's going to be... It doesn't help your situation with the counter necessarily either, but I mean, I would say, if you, if you had a lunch break, come and take a lunch break. I mean, I don't want to see people standing out there waiting, but you're entitled to the lunch break, you're entitled to the break, you're entitled to take your vacation. If these people have to wait a little bit, perhaps, then they'll think about doing it by mail. Or just, or come back if you're not so busy. You need to take the things that you're entitled to, I mean, first and foremost. Otherwise you burn out.
You embarrassed this project, right? This can happen, the class during the half of the session.
No, we got that, we got that all.
Our phone system doesn't have a voice mail function.
We should change that.
You get an answering machine, you can do that.
I know Lyle Wolf was in one time and said that they were looking venture wise, needed to update us, but I didn't hear any more on it, so...
Yeah, I don't think that would be...
If you get these phone bills, it's pretty big bills for not having that service. I mean, I, I know I've been here different times and hear this phone going off and off, and I say, well, someone can answer that phone, like... Well, everybody's going right now, so it's just whatever it does, you take the phone off, okay, it does that, we're, we're coming. Yeah, definitely, you have a voice mail, these things. Answering machine.
Like everybody else when you call, because even if they say, well, we're all busy, right, I don't know if you need your number, we'll call you back. Absolutely, we should get that done.
Yeah, nothing but you want answering machine for what? 20 bucks, 50 bucks?
No, because it's possible.
Venture has that, and the cardinal...
Should, should, voice mail system, then.
Well, in the factory service, obviously.
Yeah, she's got it.
We have it.
Your school, the fashion center... Why doesn't the insurance office have it?
Let's let's get it.
Yeah, absolutely.
Well, you're on the scoop, you need, I mean, that's ten dollar a month.
Yeah.
Let's get it.
All right, we'll take it a step at a time then, and take it, but. Need the, need official action.
Yes.
All right, this been circulated?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a motion, like a deal. Johnson, thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor, should we put it in? Please sign it.
Okay, I just heard.
We should be, we want to carry another?
Where are we at the shores of timber route here, are we all in agreement, just giving the money and wash our hands?
How much is left?
Hundred and twenty-five, hundred and fifty-five thousand bucks.
Hundred and, uh, let's see, hundred seventeen thousand seven hundred and forty-four dollars and twenty-two cents. That was after that climate control.
Yeah, well, we have about eight thousand bucks, nine thousand bucks. What about the county holding the money for the township? Should we just wash our hands and say, it's between you guys figure that out? I just wanna be done with it. And I think they want us to be done with it as well, so.
Well, right now, as far as our our cash, this was the end of April. Our cash in the account is one hundred and seventy-one thousand ninety-three and forty-two. So all I have to do is minus off that.
Fifty-five thousand dollars in there that should be distributed to, uh, distribution plate.
Right, so we just, if we minus off, excuse me, the seven thousand six hundred and sixty-six ninety-two. Because this is the end of April. So we don't have, we we may have some tax collections, we may that be received.
Or if they want to buy a tractor, let them buy a tractor and practice it a little bit.
Well, it seems silly to me.
You know, the problem is, it was the whole tip was written poorly. And so down, that's, you know, I remember early on, say, when you don't go buy a, you don't do maintenance, if, well, this one says you can.
Three tiffs is to create.
Tiff is post your piece of property, you're buying a tractors, not, there's no property tax on that. There's no property tax on putting gravel on a township, we're without the township.
I'm not suggesting that they would do this, of course, but did you buy that tractor today with that tip, or you turn it on, it's off, and next thing you go, here, bye? Not that they would do this.
That's right, that's that's why the tip is written poorly in perspective.
Yeah.
Yeah, he's.
What do they want to do then?
Cash it off, whatever the profit, turn it, use their money.
Toby, God, they want to go twenty-five thousand.
He said, why do you think they have such pretty big, the townships, that's their business.
Absolutely. If anything, you could give them twenty-five minutes township, it'd be not really long.
Yeah, the town is helpless, our part of the tip, we can't, I feel we can, we've made this helpless.
Nor do we want that responsibility. Because the same thing's gonna happen, I bet you that they come in and say, well, we want more gravel on that, well, we want to put more gravel on, well, now we're in that battle again like we were a couple of years ago.
See, that's why, like you said, this week, Dave called me and said didn't understand, but they told me that we're gonna distribute some of the townships, so then it was on four seven third night, that's why they wanted that twenty-five, oh, fine, they grassed it, said, and told them, they have to do it.
But that's something they should work out amongst themselves.
That's their, that's that's their, I'm sure not involved. But the county built it. Well, yeah. See, and that's where it all started, the county went, pushed it. Am I right on?
Yeah, but if we're dissolving this tip, why why would we have any responsibilities to continue to regulate funds?
No, I mean, once and no, but.
I just, yeah, give them, let them take it.
Yeah, that. I, because, because who's supposed to approve, explaining that, if we do, or they do, who's supposed to approve it?
They they do. Which is kind of bullshit.
They, you know, they wanna put it on the township plan and say, well, you can approve, where the township has, you know, and say, well, and so if they put it in an escrow, twenty-five thousand dollars for the township, the township will say, well, we wanna do this, they they would say, no.
Well, my guess is if if when we turn this money over, we have some stipulation in there that says.
Tip is, tip is over.
It's over, but it turns that twenty-five thousand dollars, you need to regulate that between yourself, like you say, put it in an escrow and and the township can draw on it as they need to, to reduce expenses, or maintain that road.
That's what I'm saying, four seven.
Yeah.
They're exclusively. For Dave, whatever road, four seven third, Dave.
Yeah, it's two miles away, it was, yeah.
It depends, you know, the township, never been, that's what's wrong with this. As a health, it's probably increasing the tax availability, the townships should receive more property tax. To maintain their roads.
Well, they will not, but they did.
They will, wants the tip to stop.
Say, so what's the, what's with the twenty-five thousand? That property, that value is on the staff. But it's this value of property, so why is what's.
Probably eighty, twenty-five million plus the ongoing increase in tax.
I guess Toby Goddard's on that, that's my opinion.
Is it his responsibility to draft a document, I would guess? Would be his responsibility.
He said he would do it, he said, if you guys are big with it, I'll handle the rest, but he told me on the phone, I don't know what he told you. That's a big graph.
Put some language in there for the township and the developers and.
Just just exclude the county from here.
Yeah, get outside.
So the twenty-five thousand would would be sitting where?
No, where, there won't be anywhere, that's up to them, we're just gonna write in just a hundred and seventeen thousand, whatever it is.
But if they wanna, if the township, if they wanna follow the letter of the contract, there's twenty-five thousand dollars sitting in escrow, so. So we have to make the township order that that money, and then they have to make sure they need that points out.
I'll be like that, I think that, if yours are too real, will escrow this much money, but.
Why can't you just?
Don't don't mention the county.
Yeah, exactly.
Why can't we just give twenty-five thousand to Lake Township? And let them hold it in there.
Yeah, the assets have been pointed out part of the.
I think Dylan needs to look at this, because the developers agreement did say that the buzzing native reserve shall create a reserve for future people being proved at two miles or four hundred, I mean, they have you. The initial reserve by the property minimum of twenty-five thousand.
Right, so Toby can write that in the final document.
I mean, yeah, something that Dylan needs to know, that is, I'm not gonna take Toby's word for it, you know.
Well, I need to be in the closing document, if that's.
It could be a single page letter, wouldn't it?
It was, you know, an agreement that designed by commissioners and whatever back. You know, I would assume we have to comply with it.
Well, I mean, paying the tip off doesn't indicate that that's part of the whole tip, so. If we if we donate the whole money out, they're still obligated to do that, but we're not, and they are.
As long as the township be like that, they make a bad like that, they consider that, but again, that's not our issue.
So you're saying, so you're saying if the if the tip, that hundred seventeen thousand, seven forty-four twenty-two.
Where was, where was the balance?
In Toby's final letter, he makes reference to the fact that developers owe the township that money to be spent as its road maintenance.
So then they do it instead of the county holding the twenty-five.
I think so.
Right, exactly, that's what it says.
Where does it say that?
One one fork, it says.
This is just, yeah, I'm like.
That's in the letter, I think.
But go to the tip. Actually, that's not really very much.
Here's a question. And we'd like to get a little pocket, but maybe two dollars. Do we go into executive session?
I think we should, I was gonna ask, well, there's not another issue, so.
Good luck there, Jason.
One second. All in favor, signify the same mind?
Aye.
All right, Inspector Assessor.
Well, I think if Toby brings the document in, we fully can give it to Dylan.
Yeah.
Comply.
Go into the executive session.
Oh, boy, what's going on here?
Is that live feed?
Yeah, we're live streaming, we're live streaming, they're meeting every every day, every week.
Interesting.
Yeah.
Will you refer to Coleman, Anderson?
Yeah, maybe we're up to the end of Tuesday though. It's a little sticky, it's. On Hunter, it's been eighty today. Is it, is it cooling off a bunch now, like in the sixties or something like that?
Well, they canceled softball and baseball practice for the week.
Really, because they.
Next week?
This week, because the temperature's gonna drop.
Really?
That's, I think that's what it said.
You mean, it looked like in the sixties or something like that?
Really, because they were supposed to have it.
These sixties are about perfect. I don't know, I seen my wife saw it, of course. I I have, I do plug this in, but every time AD wants to make some purchase, it shows up on the credit.
She has grabby lady, most of her.
Well, actually, she tried to take Steph to, uh, Fargo for a pain shot or something, let's see where she spent her money. Trying to get rid of what we got. I can't talk and do this. I didn't put it on, it just showed up on her form, it was, it's been a year, I go back and just check to make sure all the purchase of their money kinda did.
I don't think most of them pay bills.
Sounds like a good one. Second, Mr. Carlson, any discussion on the bills? All in favor, signify the same mind?
Aye.
Judge Carries, bill's due. What else we do about here? Any, Don, do we have any answers to cover?
You did those, you did those literature licenses, right?
Did this come in?
Yeah.
So where did I put?
So with the Toby, with Toby Moore saying too, that just talked to me, you didn't.
Don's gonna take care of it.
Don, we're going to have Dylan look at it, make sure.
Representative.
Final item, then, then, yeah.
Yeah, the final.
He rolls it up. What's his face looks at it.
But you want, you want that twenty-five thousand just to go to the township?
Whatever it goes.
He needs to look at the.
We can share all the accounts out, so everything goes to the, to the trust.
It's through the roof.
And then maybe buy it up.
But do you want that in the final?
I think that should be in.
I think it could be in, because that's a bill.
They need to.
Yeah.
For the development, if we're doing whatever. They need to pay the twenty-five thousand to Lake Township, right?
Anyway, they see deep in.
Okay, we got one more malt beverage application that came in, and that was for the food bar, cheers. Food bar. Motion to approve, be sure. So you, for example, all in favor, signify the same mind?
Aye.
Motion carries there.
Go sign it.
She said she couldn't identify the distance from the building, but they don't have a problem with it, as long as you're working on inspection.
Yeah, I I guess, I just got it this morning, so.
Oh, you did, you did.
I haven't read it, I gave Tyler a copy of it also.
Okay, how did you?
If you guys.
We're not real, so you should come to the wall.
Yeah, he's saying it doesn't, because less, less gallons. Yeah.
But we need to look at what our insurance, you know, is saying, so.
Well, they, I don't think they're saying it has to be, they're saying that common.
It says must apply with appropriate underwriting leverage, and that must say five hundred gallons or less, single.
Hundreds, hundreds, that may be.
Most likely, I saw a guy the other day, put, put, you know, I'm talking about, what's his name? He stole up a lawnmower, a gas can, cigarette hanging out of his mouth. Like lean and right, all the fumes are coming right up to his face, like, are you nuts?
Yeah, the fumes are what's bad.
Yeah, that'll, yeah.
I remember as a kid, my dad, he was just cleaning cleaning up parks, something, he was out there with a little pan of gasoline, pouring the cigarette, throw it right in the passenger.
I do that in my.
We were very proud of it before the vapors exploded, it was pretty rough.
Yeah. Maybe I can throw it.
But I remember that Min, was that Min's Resort? He did that, so he was just throwing lung, but he was hot and running.
Oh, yeah.
Burning them all.
It's a skittering powder, it's a small little generator, you had to fill like three tanks of gas, and didn't want to show up, it was the whole thing.
Oh, yeah, I was just.
Okay, your last order of business up to consideration is a proposal that we received from Sheriff Apple to increase deputy wages. One L to twenty-two, twenty-five, one V to twenty-two, one Z to twenty-two. And one F to twenty dollars per hour, this is the proposal. And the chair would entertain a motion to either accept or reject, modify what the.
Do they have one clue? What if it puts a title?
Title the. Oh, and to eliminate longevity.
Yes.
Eliminate, eliminate longevity.
And that's every year.
This will be reassessed if eliminated year.
But it goes into effect.
It's going to affect me twenty-fifth.
Yeah, after the, after the big payroll.
Make that motion by Carlson, now, did you want to modify one F? Because his proposal was for twenty, and if you.
We set, we set it at nineteen now, and he goes, once he's certified, he goes to.
The fact that.
Sixteen, we're gonna raise it to nineteen now.
Okay, so that wouldn't, okay, so that one, one F would go to nineteen.
Right.
Not twenty.
Right.
And the other ones as proposed.
Yeah.
Are we clear on that motion?
Yes.
Is there a second to Carlson's motion on that? By Johnson, is there any further discussion? All in favor of that motion, signify the same. The motion's saying no, motion carries. Pay bills.
Uh, go back.
Do you, do you wanna be the one to make the phone call?
I can call there. I can call there.
Is there any other, other, other business?
Not for me.
Disgusting, is there a motion to adjourn? For y'all, second by Carlson, all in favor of that, signify the same aye? Motion carries, thank you, everyone.
See you next week.
This livestream is brought to you by Dakota Pawn and Thrift, for all your pawn needs. Countryside aid, assisted living, and memory care. In Rosalt, where your family is our family. First Savings Bank of Sisseton, to use our online banking to save you time. Stilson Service in Sisseton with Marathon Fuels. Tri-State Water in Sisseton, for all your water needs, water softeners and reverse osmosis, right here in Sisseton. And, of course, the Sisseton Courier, where we do more than the weekly newspaper. Thanks for watching, and have a great day.